Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Our first item is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's a few things.
Do we want that podium turned the other way, don't we?
I don't know.
Facing us.
Do we want the podium turned?
It should be facing us, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. While he's turning the podium, we'll just go over a few items that typically we follow for the Selectmen's Meeting because there's a few new people here out here tonight. Thank you for coming. At, we kind of go down through the agenda, but during the agenda items, we welcome public comment during the public comment section, which is, I'm not listing it here.
It's at the very end.
Oh, okay.
After new business.
Maybe I got an older. Well, anyhow, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. If you have something you'd like to say that perhaps is going to be longer than three minutes, you can ask to be put on the agenda for next week by contacting Jennifer. And we do need to know the nature of the business you'll be talking about during that. Also, at the end of the meeting, we ask that you vacate the room pretty quickly. If you have any other conversations you'd like to have with your friends that are here, you can have them in the parking lot. You don't need to put the chairs away. It's very thoughtful of you to help out our camera crew, but the camera crew is here to do that. It is their job, so you can leave the chairs as they are. Did I leave anything out?
I think that's it.
I don't think so.
Okay. Oh, the other thing, there was a lot of you here tonight, but to keep your whispering down because it does pick up on the audio feed and makes it a little difficult for people to hear at home. Moving on to our meeting, do we have an approval of the agenda?
Actually, Madam Chair, I've got two committees that need to be put under Department Head Updates.
Okay.
The School Committee and the Marijuana Committee.
After those additions.
Okay. And we didn't have public comment on here, correct?
Yeah.
So add that as item six?
Item six.
Five, six. Item six will be the public comment section. With those, with those additions, I'll approve the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
All in favor. I'd like to postpone the approval of the minutes of last meeting. I did see something I was unclear about that I wanted to clarify. Department Head Committee Chair Updates, we have the School Committee.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Oliver. I'm the Finance Director at the school. Good evening. I've been requested to return to speak specifically about statements made at the October thirty-first Selectmen's Meeting and the November warrant in Finance Meeting. The first statement I want to discuss is the three percent rule by the state. This is a rule that is in Acton's fund balance policy. Acton has and does follow the policy. Two years ago, the school returned three hundred thousand dollars to offset taxes. This is directly related to the three percent rule. By returning this amount, the school stayed within the limits of the law. RHR Smith has stated that Acton School does not have to follow the three percent rule. Technically, it's true because of the type of funding we receive currently from the state. It's all special ed-related. Acton does not fall under the three percent rule that large RSUs have to follow because of that, but Acton still follows the three percent rule. It's part of the school's fund balance policy, and the state at times will change their mind. And by following it all the time, we won't end up in a pickle. The second statement is regarding the Union's collective bargaining agreements. Even though the school works with collective bargaining agreements, the school does not obligate any funds in future years. All teachers and staff are given one-year salary and benefit contracts. It's only valid for the upcoming school year and only after the town has voted for the school budget in April. So if funds are decreased in any manner, it is up to the school to work within the adjusted amounts. The next area is regarding the names of the funds, the fund balance policy, which is on our website. The school has started its policy with all the definitions of the funds it uses. Each fund is defined and given examples to fully understand how they're used. The school budget warrant has been the same for the last four years as well. These articles are written to meet the requirements of the state as they need to calculate their essentials, programs, and services formula. The warrant starts with authorizing the School Committee to expend funds in specific cost center categories. This is a process to limit amounts allowed to be expended within each of the articles. Articles thirteen and fourteen are the two articles used to raise the funds for the proposed budget. That's equivalent to the expended requests within each cost center. And Article fifteen summarizes a proposed school budget and reflects all revenues that are part of the total budget. Sixteen through eighteen authorizes grants and revenue expenditures. This is, this process is what is required by all schools, not just large schools, and that's been stated more than once, and I've, it is not. We all have to follow it. Without this format, the state will not have a mechanism for calculating EPS formulas unilaterally amongst all schools. The last item is reserve funds that were created in two thousand and fourteen. They were created to be designated reserve funds for specific purposes only, and each purpose was defined in each of the articles. So, for example, one article was used for the purpose of covering whether new residents moved in and attended the high school, or homeschool students decided to attend charter schools, or we have new students that come in with special needs. Instead of actually budgeting for what-if type case scenarios, we only budget for what we actually have. Those reserves would help us if something extenuating service comes later without having to raise more tax money. The school is currently working on the schedule for the school budget. Last year, the Warren and Finance attended our meetings, and I hope they will this year. The School Committee will meet at six P.M., and that is part of our agenda, is to come up with our budget process for this year. So if anyone does have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Marijuana Committee?
Thank you. My name's Richard Nass. I'm currently the Chair of the Acton Marijuana Committee. So we just thought we'd use this opportunity just to tell you we are still meeting, gathering information. Some of which get sent to you, most of which I think you're aware of. There are at least three members of the committee, I think, and two of you are going to a seminar tomorrow in Augusta.
Yep.
I think. I see a couple heads shaking.
Yep.
That's good. Pretty much everybody's aware of what happened when the legislature met. They kind of threw out what might have been the rules for going forward, so that's not on the books. They, legislature passed a governor veto. Legislature did not sustain the governor's veto, did not override the governor's veto. So speculation now moving forward as to what happens, legislature basically, as I understand it, is concerned, at least some of them are concerned with two things. One, rules governing OUI driving, and that's going to be particularly difficult. Nobody's been able to set up any rules for marijuana-type OUI. Loopholes in the medical marijuana provision, there's some new rules coming out this week from Augusta. And what should be of interest to all of us, there's a small part of the rules that were not passed that dealt with sharing of revenue with the towns, and that apparently is an issue. There's a good chunk of the legislature that does not want to share even a small part of what might be marijuana revenue, either sales or excise tax with the town. So that continues to be an issue. And as I said, we're still gathering information. Jerry basically is continuing to set up conference calls, so we've talked with a lot of people in the state of Washington and Colorado, and we're going to continue to do that. We're going to meet this week. We will not meet next week after Thanksgiving, but after that, we'll continue to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other department head or committee chairs? Nope, okay. Moving on to old business, we have Buzzard Road, which is a follow-up with Dennis Long.
So Mr. Lenkowski did review the extremely large packet that we sent to him. We pulled all of the town records that we had regarding Buzzard Road, Youngs Ridge Road. The question was if he could make a determination to exactly where the townway ended, because there's been some discussion over the years about where the plowing should stop. And the response from his is that unless someone can give him something legal that shows where Farmer Buzzard's barn was, with some type of survey, he cannot. And then there's nothing further that he can do. He has reviewed everything. He said that it's, it's all based on that location, and unless the town wants to pay to have it surveyed, there's nothing more that he can do.
I had talked to Jen the other day about this, and she asked me that unless I had some more information, official documents, that that was the way it was, which is fine with me. But being as I've been volunteering for forty-five years now, I have a lot of papers at the house, and I did find some official town documents with the maps and different things if I could approach this. This is part of it, but this here is when the Selectmen shortened what was in Buzzard Road, the old Buzzard Road, which is right here. And what they knocked off was from Joe's Road to here, okay? Because that, that used to be Buzzard Road to here before the nine-one-one thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So they knocked that off. This was Town Road, okay? This is a document that Nancy ruined it in nineteen ninety-five. And as you can see on this page, these are all the camp roads and the townways and what the status is. On this page of townways, they have Buzzard Road as a townway, okay?
One point eight miles of it?
Yes. But as you can see, in oh-seven, that's when Buzzard Road still went to Joe's Road.
When you say Joe's Road.
Joe's Road is, was Buzzard Road again.
Right here.
Joe's Road is right there.
Okay.
Right there. And out in here is where Crawford's pits were and stuff. And so this is a map that Bill Gannon got from Augusta from the Department of Transportation, this map here.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look, this is maps online. Again, it's showing Buzzard Road. And see, this here is Lakeside Drive, that's fully wagged. See how the difference in the lines?
Mm-hmm.
Those are camp roads.
Mm-hmm.
And the maps online, this is Acton's maps online. This way here is Langley Shore.
Yep.
And this is at dirt road, it was out just before the four. Again, that's basically the same thing, but it's an older map. This map here, I believe, was before Langley Shore was accepted.
Mm-hmm.
Here somewhere, I'm sorry, I can't.
I've not seen any road names.
Here we are up here.
Ah.
Here we are up here somewhere. And I think that was before Langley Shore was accepted, I'm not sure.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I see, it goes in this way.
There we go.
Okay.
So that's the information that I have. And it's all town documents. And I believe that's really all I do have. And I would like to say on this subject that, excuse me, the reason why I joined the Road Committee was to help out with some of these different roads that might be in question and whatever, and just the fact that I surely don't know everything, but just the fact I've been in town my whole life, and I've served on many, many committees. My reason for being here is not to cause problems, but to straighten out a few down the road and hopefully make the town a little better, better place for the citizens and you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's something we want to send off to Lenkowski, just to have him.
Just a few more details to add to his file?
It may not change it, but.
So you want him to review these documents and see if it changes his opinion at all?
Just maybe he'll pick, you know, if there's anything that he can pick up that we don't, we don't, or Dennis hasn't, so.
Okay.
Okay, personal property tax. William, Williams, follow-up?
I'm going to respectfully ask the board to move that down under new business. I have a few things under my job titles that I need to present, and I have included the personal property in that, so.
Okay.
So two weeks ago, we got a lot of comments about Metrocast when signing the Atlantic Broadband document. They quickly saw your concerns. They watched the videos, they sent you contact information, so I forwarded you all those emails, trying to figure out what you want to do about it, if you want to bring this individual in and actually schedule a meeting where people that might have concerns with Metrocast can speak to them directly, just start giving out his number. But I also called Burke and Clay's office again, and the document, the Atlantic Broadband document, you have to, under good faith, turn that over, because there isn't, she says there's no clause in the current contract that you have with Metrocast to not let them take over, and that's all that agreement does. So they certainly want to talk to you about their concerns, Metrocast does, but according to the attorney, she didn't feel there was, you had any reason to not forward that to them.
Most of that teeth, I think, is in the contract between Metrocast and the town, which that is not, so.
This is just your, and he did tell me that if you guys don't sign it, I mean, after a hundred and eighty days, if you don't show just cause for not, it'll be accepted anyways.
Okay.
So, but as far as Metrocast, and, you know, maybe it would be helpful to the residents that have the concerns, you know, not knowing how the transition's going to take place between Atlantic Broad and Metrocast, maybe bringing them in and having, you know, just a.
That might be a good idea.
Question and answer period, and let people that have concerns with Metrocast.
Yep.
Take it up directly with them.
Would like to do that.
So maybe we can schedule it for after the holidays, or at least after.
Or between.
In between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah.
What time? You want to do like a six or a seven?
On a Tuesday?
Whatever day you tell me.
Six o'clock on a Tuesday.
And that's going to be with, we want a representative from Metrocast and also Atlantic Broadband, right? I mean, it doesn't, because as we talked about, it doesn't do a lot of good to give Metrocast all of our concerns if they're going to be bought out in two months.
Right.
But one thing that I.
The gentleman you spoke to said he would come and.
He did, and that, but I also learned that most of Metrocast's staff, higher-up staff, is staying with the buyout anyways, so it's good to get them in here.
Okay, Youngs Ridge Road with Jan. It was Jan, Stephens.
I don't think she's here, really the only update. I CC'd you in the emails. I just wanted to let her know that we did contact the Sheriff's Department. We did let them know the concerns. We also, I think the way that we left it is she was going to try to get some pictures of some specific trucks or company names that we can find out are going down through there. I asked Deputy Shaw to patrol it a little bit more to see if that would help any, but as far as the Jake break concern, unless the Selectmen want to think about creating an ordinance for the townspeople, you know, that's not a, you don't have a whole lot of authority in that area.
Is this the time that I would say a comment?
Almost.
So we've asked them to, we've asked them to better patrol it.
Yep.
And we've asked her to, if it's the same trucks that are going down through there.
I've been keeping my eye out too and have been taking notes, so.
And the bridge, didn't we, didn't we agree? Can we speak to Mr. Winchell as a, the Road Commissioner on this end?
Yeah.
David, that bridge is, bridge is posted, right, down there for how many ton?
Three ton.
Three ton.
Yeah. I know there was some work happening at the top of the hill there, so I don't know if the trucks are just going there and.
That's what we're not, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
And I thought she made it sound more like in the summer, there was a lot more speeding. I mean, it didn't sound like they were going in and out.
Yeah.
Is there, there's a pit up there too, isn't there? And would a loaded truck be over three ton?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Most one tons are.
Okay, so.
It's not just the trucks that are speeding.
We don't want to pursue the Jake break at this point. We'll just keep an eye on it and try to get law enforcement to handle it.
Yep.
And what about the, it's somewhat related, she had asked about your speed sign.
Right.
You're on a list to be getting one.
We contacted, I contacted Tim Soucy, who is the gentleman that's looking over the, doing the speed survey down by the foot of the lake, and he has assured me that we're on his list.
Okay.
And Youngs Ridge, it wasn't that we needed a new sign, because the Road Commissioners can do that, that she wanted to change, right? She wanted to change the speed limit?
Yeah, slow it down.
Didn't we just change that from, it's what, thirty-five down through there?
It's thirty-five.
Dave?
I feel like the signs were just posted, like maybe they weren't posted before.
I know there was, I know there was a change to that just recently, or.
We just went through a one-whole-year process of having them come and do the recertification of the speed limits, so they're not going to come back down and do them again after they just did them last year, you know, so.
That's thirty-five through there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, which is a prudent speed, really, for.
Actually, if you do thirty-five.
If you do thirty-five, yeah.
I mean, that's not, you know, that's not our problem, that's our sheriff, that we pay money to, that's his job, so.
Yep.
But the signs are up, and if I can comment on both the trucks, there is a pit, now and then they come in and out of Lakeside Drive, well, Buzzard, whatever you want to call it, but they're doing a lot of work around top of Youngs Ridge.
Right.
There's a bunch up there. I have caught a few trucks going over the bridge. I'll follow them along. I'm not DOT, and I will tell them, don't do it again. But unfortunately, what's happening is when they come across on the New Hampshire side and the main side, I was sitting there ditching one day and the guy came through.
He's stuck.
And I stopped him before I went across, but what happens is the, their GPS is sending them that way. So when they get down there, they can't turn around, so they say screw it, and they're roll anyways. Now and then I catch them, but I can't do anything unless I call DOT, and most of the time, they're pretty good. You know, I give them a, you know, let's not do that. I'm having the same problem with Hopper Road right now. Hopper Road, we did pass an ordinance to post that road, and the signs, two of the, a couple of the signs came in wrong. We put them up, but we have since changed them, but those signs are sixty thousand GRVW, and they think they're allowed to run it empty, but they don't know what the R means.
Yeah.
So I've had to stop numerous trucks and tell them, R means registered weight. So I think we slowed down a little bit of the truck traffic that way, and that was one, one reason I did that was because of the bridge and the radius down there, but the only way that stuff's going to stop is either a sheriff is updated on those laws or Department of Transportation, and well, I must want to see those guys there.
Is it possible to put a posted bridge ahead on one oh-nine? Or even on.
Well, you can't do it on one oh-nine, because there's a bridge they're allowed to go over, so that would be a lot of confusion, you know what I mean? Right next to your house, that bridge there, you know, if you have a.
Oh, so you'd have to, you'd have to turn onto Youngs Ridge.
You have to turn onto Youngs Ridge, and there is a one, we have to reinstall it, it got taken down, but.
Yeah.
There's a couple, there's a couple of them there, because there's another one right at, I put another one right at the end of New Bridge coming on to Canal.
Okay.
There's one there also, so there is.
Okay.
They, they can turn around there, and they can also turn around at Robinson Road. Lot of the truck traffic's coming out of New Hampshire, coming across, and they do have a posted sign over there, but.
Okay.
Problem is, it's such a short stretch, by the time they're through, it's, you know, one in a million catching them, so, and like I said, after I catch them, you can't do anything anyways, so.
Okay, thank you. New, are we all set with that? So, new business, Lois Michu.
Hi, my name's Lois Michu. I live here in the town of Acton, lived here for a long time, been a volunteer for several years. Sorry, I'm not very good at speaking up, and I don't like really speaking too well in public. The last Thursday, I was here at a meeting, and while I was helping clean up like we normally have in the past, helping the gentleman that runs the cable, I was approached by Elise Miller and grabbed by Elise Miller several times. I really didn't appreciate it. If you have an issue with me and you need to talk to me, that's fine. You pull me, you, you send me a message, you contact me, and you tell me it's fine. The problem I have is that you're an official. You have no right as an official, no more than I do, to reach out and grab a hold of anybody, and I'm looking for a letter of apology from you for doing this. I'm sorry that it had to come to that extreme, but you should have never laid your hands on me. Thank you.
I think you, well, I won't go there. Cindy Hart?
On a lighter note, I was not here a couple of weeks ago because of the, all of our power outages, or I would have stated I was on the agenda then, so we're going to go back a little bit. The sand bid, when it came in, I want to revisit it. We had four bids, two of them came in at three eights, two of them came in at one quarter. When I asked to speak and was not allowed to, I wanted to explain that the quarter-inch sand is the difference between if you ask for silver, you get gold. It has gone through an extra process, and it's a better product. Two of the products that were offered in the bid were quarter-inch sand, the highest-priced one and the lowest-priced one. The purpose of having bids at all is to get the best product for the least money. We didn't do that. That hurts everyone, that hurts the taxpayers. We need to watch our money. This isn't, this is Claire Bragg's money, this is everyone that's on social security. We need to tighten our belts and watch this stuff. The second thing was the turnarounds, and I watched your meeting and was disappointed to hear that this was considered, oh, something maybe you can put off. Well, these are liability issues. When you drive into somebody's yard, first of all, you ask permission. If you don't get it, you don't drive into the yard. We have the vehicle where we can have a legal turnaround easement, and the Road Committee a couple of months ago brought you all the information to, to do this. There was plenty of time then. Now, it's been put off. I don't feel liability issues are options, I feel they're responsibilities. The next thing are the bridges. The bridges were handled by the Road Committee. We brought you the information so that you understood that, you know, we have ten bridges in town, four of them have municipal responsibility. None of those bridges have received the proper maintenance. We're now hopefully trying to catch up on that, but this has to happen on an annual basis, or again, it costs us money. Now, the signage, as far as the Hopper Road Bridge, should probably be checked. I don't know. I would like to know when the seventeen report comes in on the bridges from the state, that may change that. However, the signage is not correct. One of our signs in Acton has GRVW, the other one just has GRW. That signage I mentioned to you before also, and nothing was done. The other thing, a project was brought up on, on the Hopper Road where many culverts were taken out, probably eight of them, and I drive by every week to check the, the bridge, and I kept seeing them there for weeks, and then they were gone. Now, I'd like to know where they were, because they were usable culverts, they were replaced apparently to be resized, but they were usable culverts that could have been put to another purpose. I have heard they were stolen. I, I'm hoping to hear that they were stored somewhere and can be used for something else. The other thing that I brought up is Thirteenth Street. We're currently plowing it illegally. We can make it legal very easily. We have the easements in hand. The only thing we have to do is change our road ordinance, and we can do exactly that, but you can't violate your own road ordinance. And, and that, the problem, our lawyer's saying, okay, this was all right, was because he didn't realize that the town itself had a road ordinance. It's an easy correct, and I just want us to cross the Ts and dot the Is and do things right. Let's take care of our liability issues and watch our money. And, and what I wanted to. And, and what I wanted to come up to on the positive part is last week, we had a, a vote, and, uh, money, Acton voted for it, and so did the state for, uh, money for our roads and bridges. And the other thing was stream crossings, and I don't know if you're familiar with that. But a stream crossing replaces a culvert situation in more natural areas. Where your culvert will last twenty years, a stream crossing will last fifty to seventy-five years. Money is going to be available, and we need to be ready, first of all, to identify which areas we could use it in, and second of all, to be right there in line to look for that state money. Nobody has enough money to do the roads the way we want to do them. So we have to try to grab at these grants when they're available and, and use them. Um, I'd be happy to come back. If you have any questions, ask me. I know you've got a lot more on your agenda. I'm happy to ask, uh, any, answer any questions or come back and go over more. But the bridges especially, I'd like to know what, what has happened since you guys have been like, I haven't seen the maintenance done right. We still have rebar exposed on the top of the Hopper Road Bridge. There's a four hundred thousand dollar liability for the town on that. There's a hole on the deck of that bridge on the downstream side that I believe the water is pouring through, and now when we start adding the salt, if you look on the left-hand side down below, you'll see where the, the spalling is happening to the concrete. Patch that up, maybe we'll save it a little bit longer, cover up the rebar, and, and hope for the best. And the road committee does want to see anything that comes in on the roads. Let us take a look. We might see something the road commissioners don't see or don't recognize. Uh, we're here to help you. We're here to even offer you our time, and, uh, that's all I have to say. Um, any questions?
No, I just want to say on the sand bid, the bids came in, we opened them, we handed them to our road commissioners. And to me, the road commissioners are the ones that make the determination on what we use for sand. And they gave us their recommendation. It was unanimous between the two, and that's what we went with.
No, I understand. That's how you did it.
Yep, yeah, and I think that's the way to do it.
Yeah, well, well, that was the way we did it. Maybe we'll think it, well, maybe we'll change.
Yeah, maybe not. Thank you.
Can David answer the questions while he's here?
Uh, yes.
On the, uh, sand bids, we, um, we just don't pick a guy because we like him. We actually go and check the sand out. And I guess it's easy for people to get up here and say, "Oh, twenty-five cents this and that." Hey, if they're worried about five hundred dollars, I'll write them a check right now. Then I don't have to worry about my sand will freeze up in the middle of winter time because of the silt in, in the sand, okay? I don't know how many people on this road committee have spread sand out the back of a sand duster when it gets wet, and then it turns, and it gets really cold, and it freezes up. Makes a big difference, just finds in it. When Scott and I went and looked at the sand, we knew what we were looking at, okay? Now, it's not like we picked the guy that we picked last year and then we didn't use, okay? Which I've got to clarify because of a, a comment that was made at a last, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before, but, um, the issue is a road committee member came up and made comment that, um, we put the screws to the guy that got it the year before, because we cost them money and this and that. Again, I'm going to state what happened here. When Gorham Sand and Gravel got the bid, okay, I do, and Scott does, but typically, I deal with the sand guy after the bid is accepted. Okay, I do the ordering and this and that, and then Scott and I arrange time when we're going to put it in. So, I met with Gene from Gorham Sand. We went down, I showed him the shed, saying, "We've got two thousand yards in here. We would like to use up what we've got so we can make, keep, keep our salt coming in, so we don't clutter ourselves, okay? So we still have room for our loaders and stuff." No problem. I talked to him a couple of times. We were trying to line up between snowstorms. Things didn't happen. Then we got to the point where snow came in hard. We had salt, salt, salt coming in, and next thing you know, our budget was depleted. Scott and I decided that it was not fiscally responsible to go order material if we don't have any money, so we didn't. So what ended up happening was, unfortunately, their contract did not go into the next fiscal year. If we had gotten our money, say, if their contract was into, uh, July thirty-first, and we got our money July first, we could have gone and used that contract, but we were able to get by on what we got. Gene from Gorham Sand, he thought that we must have gone and got it somewhere else. That's why he had an issue.
But you and I called him, and we had a conversation and clarified that, so.
So I'm trying to, I want to clarify this because it was kind of upsetting the way that, um, we were thrown under the bus like we, we screwed these people. Now, these people didn't, back in the day when we used to order sand, and we'd get, say, Turrcott, Turrcott, this is how Turrcott used to do it. When we gave him the bid, he would screen it as we did it, or he'd put up a couple thousand yards and screen as we did it. He was actually spending money processing it for us. These people have sixty thousand yards of this material sitting there at all time. It was, this isn't, we didn't put these guys in bankruptcy, okay? To make a statement like that, that was ill-advised, I think, okay? And on the winter sand, I'm sure Mrs. Hart's screened sand before, but if you, when you ask for three eight screen sand, you don't get three eight screen sand. You use a three eight screener, you get three sixteenths quarter inch sand. That's how that works unless your screen's a war out, okay? So, I don't know, and I also want to bring up the fact that our road committee, Mrs. Hart, contacted our bidders before anybody in Town Hall did this, okay? And this became a real big deal, okay? Because, to me, it wasn't a big deal. Because one of the people that bid on the sand told a town official, okay, that if we don't give him the contract, that he wasn't allowed back in the pit, and neither was the town of Acton. So now we're talking about a personal issue with our businesses, because somebody went in and out of their way, above and beyond their intelligence, to go out there and do what they were doing when it wasn't their job.
Okay, let's not be offensive.
Nothing, nothing was said about that at the meeting. So.
Okay, so we're, you're here to answer turnarounds in the, the sign, the difference in the.
We just had a road committee member get up here and talk about how we didn't do our job right choosing sand, okay? We've been, I've been doing this for nine years now.
And you clarified that with your three eight screen.
And I clarified that. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear how this all rolls.
Can you just go over the, the difference in the two signs on the Hopper Road? One says GRVW, one says GRW.
Changed them out. I got them branched as far as I know.
You changed them out? Okay, so they're correct now?
Yeah, they were, they were. So, I mean, I, I ordered new ones, and I sent the guys to put them on. As far as I know, they were GRVW.
Okay.
Okay, but I mean, uh, some people have more time on their hands to ride around and inspect some stuff that I, you know, whatever, but.
But the bridges.
Well, I was going to ask, did you have a comment on the legal plowing of Thirteenth Street?
Yes, I do. I do, okay. But, see, I'm, uh, stuck in the middle of this whole deal. I used to have a contract on this road, okay? And I used to plow at four Thirteenth Street. Then through the town, my guy, and a separate guy would do Covewood Drive. I get a phone call from the selectmen saying, "You have to start plowing Thirteenth Street," okay? April first, it was on April first I got that phone call, because I thought it was an April Fool's joke, okay? And it wasn't. And I told them that I was not going to do it through the town until the next prior, next year, because I am still on a contract, okay? Didn't make any sense. We didn't have any snow afterwards anyway, so it was fine. But what I was told by the selectmen, that I had to plow Thirteenth Street because of the obligation that we have in on Covewood Drive, because that is a town road. And for town people to get out of their road, they have to drive down that road, and it has to be plowed, okay? So, um, as far as I know, there's a letter from MMA saying that we have to do that road. So, um.
We have to do Thirteenth Street or Covewood?
Thirteenth Street.
Okay.
Thirteenth Street from one oh nine to Covewood, okay? We have to plow that because of the obligation of Covewood Drive, because the problem is, I think there's two. I thought there was only one, but there's, there's two roads in the state domain that actually have private roads that you have to drive down to get to a public road, okay? This is obviously an issue. Um, the town, um, back in the day, I don't know, I don't know, four or five years ago maybe, tried discontinuing Covewood Drive. It failed, okay? And the lawyer at that point, and that's why, when the lawyer came in and said, "We have to plow that," that's when that whole issue came up. That's why I end up, they were going to try to get rid of it because of that. It failed. I'm still doing what I'm supposed to be doing. It's not illegal. And, um, I'm just doing what I'm told, because that's what the selectmen told me to do, and it's only the right thing to do anyways.
There's a letter from Derby Hodgson's office.
Yeah.
Same exact page, exactly.
Okay. We'll find that.
You'd like me to find it?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
Uh, what's the other one? Do you have a bridge update?
Nope.
No bridges?
Nope, right now, we are in, uh, plow truck mode. Um, we are worried about getting our winter sand in. Um, we, we just got some pavement on the Hopper Road. Uh, the pavement came a couple, three weeks later than we were supposed to have gotten it. So, between everything else, we're trying to, between the weather events and everything else that we've had, um, we're going to try to get the shoulders in here as, as soon as possible. Hopefully, the snow will melt off, so we can get them in. Um, so right now, we're in brush, uh, storm removal, shoulders, and plowing and sanding. You will not get a bridge report out of me, because I don't believe this winter I'd be able to do any, anything else anyways. And also, on the culverts.
Okay, that was the next question.
Um, those culverts, we didn't just pull these culverts out because we wanted to. We pulled them out because they were ovalled out.
They were what?
They were ovalled out.
Ovalled out.
They were squatted.
Okay.
Okay. We pulled them out, we put new ones in. We didn't upsize them. They were plenty big enough. Um, this time, we compacted them, and, uh, I shouldn't have said that. But, um, we reinstalled them. We put our erosion control and everything. Um, we ended up working on the high side of Hopper Road. We, we did the culverts down there, so we could let them sit, settle before we, before we end up trying to get the money to grind it and do it right. Um, the culverts that were there, some of them we'd ripped up pretty good, and some of them were pretty decent looking. They were decent looking from a drive-by, okay? If anybody with any knowledge sees a culvert that looks like an egg, knows you're probably not going to use them again. So unfortunately, I'd gotten a couple of calls, people wanting culverts, and I told them, "I will get back to you," because they were really no use to the town of Acton. But unfortunately, they disappeared before I got back to them. I got a picture of one guy's truck, no license plate, okay? But, um, uh, we hadn't got down.
Call me tomorrow on that.
What's that?
Call me tomorrow on that truck.
Okay, um, but the issue was, um, actually, they did us a favor because they were junk, but that wasn't the purpose.
Right.
I needed a machine there to load them out. Some of them had sand and stuff in them. They were quite heavy. Some of them had water in them. They do, you know, if you puncture a hole, they get water inside the ribs. I wasn't going to have the guys load them up by hand. Unfortunately, they disappeared before I got back there. I took a vacation. I come back, they were gone, so. But to set the record clear, they're not sitting on one of my jobs anyways. I didn't give them to anybody. They got stolen, and they were junk.
Hopper Road looks great, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. William Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
William Williams. Warrant Finance. I asked to be able to speak this evening for a few minutes because of what apparently is taking place, and I'm still not quite certain why or how it has occurred. For those who are listening, this is the data that I presented two or three weeks ago to this group, because I really and truly wanted to find out what had happened. The valuation, um, of our, uh, personal property and retail entities had dropped almost ninety percent from three point six million down to sixty-two thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. And asked why that, why that was, and of course, I didn't expect any answer that day. And so they were, they were going to look into it, which was fine. We did add some emails. All of them were polite. All of them were, were not insulting, and we did not make anybody a scapegoat. It's not my way to be impolite. It's not my way to, to bully people. After our meeting last Thursday, uh, Ms. Miller sort of sequestered me in the kitchen and said that I owed Ms. Rue an apology, and I said, "An apology for what?" Uh, and I ask you all, if you want to look at the emails, I hope they have them and they haven't been tampered with. There's nothing in any of those emails that is impolite to Ms. Rue. Ms. Rue, as far as I'm concerned, is a very, very hard worker, excuse me, a very, very hard worker. She's very diligent in her job. I told Ms. Miller, as far as I was concerned, that the Board of Selectmen owed her, Ms. Rue, an apology because they hired her to be the tax collector without any job description. And one doesn't have to have a master's in business administration to know that you shouldn't be hiring somebody without giving them the opportunity to know exactly what's expected of them. And with that, our conversation ended. As far as the meeting itself, we were very polite to everybody who was here. I was told before the meeting, by email, that to stop the meeting, that I had no right to call a meeting, that it was a waste of taxpayers' money to have a meeting, and that nobody would show up at the meeting as far as the Board of Selectmen or, uh, any other person auditor or whatever, including the town administrator. However, uh, two of the boards, uh, Board of Selectmen did show up, and we allowed them to speak unlimited for a long period of time. Some of the accusations that were thrown my way, I didn't quite understand in terms of, of some weird label that he said I had ordered, uh, for my committee. And basically, I had, this was internal business within the commu, uh, within the committee, but as was requested at the very beginning, when we write things down on the, on the server for the town, uh, we copied Ms. Rue. Ms. Rue told me that she was the secretary for the Board of Selectmen. Always keep her copied, and we did. There's, there's a problem here, because I figured ye doth protest too loudly. All I did was ask to have this looked at, and the next thing I know, I was being accused of causing all sorts of other difficulties. And to be quite honest with you, at this point in time, I also had somebody very loudly standing right here say, "Williams, you should resign from the committee because you, you've caused trouble." What trouble did I cause? Again, I asked everyone to look at the emails. I did not telephone, um, Ms. Rue at all on the election day. I did drop by her window and said, "I need a job description for the tax collector." She was on the phone, uh, I think, talking with, uh, somebody who needed some, some consolation. She says, "I'll send it this afternoon," so that was fine. Then she sent me a note saying that she didn't have one. You know, I spoke with the Board of Selectmen Chair and Ms. Rue probably about three or four weeks before that time, and told her that I was truly worried that the two other members needed to recuse themselves, at least in some instances, as far as conflict of interest, when one is a close friend of one of the road commissioners and used to be an employee, and the other one is married to someone who is an employee. And they just said that they had thought about that before, but didn't think it was going to be a problem. Getting back to, uh, this, some of the things, our committee didn't have a specific warrant. However, it's good that we get this thing looked at before we get into the season for budgets, because that would hold us up if we brought it up then. And we have a right to look at things. I think the voters voted our committee in and voted that we should be a watchdog for certain things, that if there's a question about something, as far as taxes are concerned, in this instance, a possible dropping of, of, uh, people having to pay, uh, in this instance, a possible dropping of, of, uh, people having to pay, uh, retail entity, uh, personal property tax, that would be important. Doesn't mean these people were, were, uh, the cause of it because there's so many changes that occur with each Board of Selectmen session. But we have a right to do that, we have an obligation to do that. We took an oath of office to do that. And when I see elderly people coming in and paying twenty or thirty dollars installment on their property tax, and our property taxes went up this past year, and then looked at this paper-
Mr. Williams should speak to the board, please.
I'm sorry, and then looked at this paper and, and saw that all of a sudden, the valuations had disappeared by ninety percent, I thought that was truly something to go see. Now, again, as far as, as, as other things, I have also been, brought up another issue which I will be glad to bring up now or bring up later, but involves an employee who received, uh, a severance package that truly dishonored her after years and years of tireless work because it wasn't listed as an article in a warrant, and it was stuck into the administration's, um, uh, costs for greater than a fiscal year. And it was a dishonor to her because I think that she obviously needed the money, she wanted the money, and if it had been done properly, uh, and giving something like that, which we have no right to give without a, a vote of the, the voters, it would have been approved because she had worked tirelessly, seven days a week many times, for, for the good of our town. But it was done wrong, and, and therefore, it dishonored her. And so based on all of this, all I'm saying is that we want to work, we are not going to be a passive committee that allows things to go by without saying something. We will always say it politely, we will always say it, uh, without any malice, and we will always email without malice and email very politely. We're not gonna be bullied. And my last item is the physical assault piece. We've had two women on our committee who've been assaulted by two of you on the Board of Selectmen over the last two months. That's really, really bad.
I, I have to say something. I have to say something. I did not grab Lois Michu. I did not grab her, I gently laid-
You grabbed a hole in me right there on the floor.
You're being violent, intimidating.
May I speak with you?
Yeah.
It's exactly what I did, and I had no idea she was upset, and that's all I'm gonna say.
All I'm asking, all I'm asking, all I'm asking is don't bully the people on Warrant Finance Committee. And I ask all the people here if they want to see all the terrible impoliteness that occurred-
Mr. Williams?
-to ask for an email thread.
You should be, uh, speaking to us.
Yes.
Sorry, ask for, ask the people email thread, thank you.
You can leave now.
Yeah. I want to speak to some, two of the, two of the points. One was the book that I mentioned, I did misspeak on that book. That was not an, that was not an item that he had, I had the wrong title to that item, so I do apologize for the book. As far as a close friend and employee of one of the road commissioners, Dave is a friend of mine, he's done some work for me, so is Scott. And I'd like to think that I'm friends with a number of other people in this room. Um, as far as worked for him, it was under two weeks that I worked for him, was no longer than that, so. And that was, how many years ago? Um, been on this board five and a half years, five and a half years ago, so it was at least five years ago that it was.
Four or five years.
Yep, and it was one little project we did, and that was it, so.
Can I speak to this?
As far as, um-
Almost.
No.
So, um-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna respectfully request, if Mr. Driscoll doesn't mind, I'd like to follow, uh, Dr. Williams because I think that my presentation has a lot of follow-up into what he said, and it may feed along better if Jim's okay with that.
Now, I also know that I was to address the Board of Selectmen, um, but I am your town administrator, and you chose, um, you thought it was in the best interest for me not to go to the Warrant and Finance meeting that was held last Thursday, so I'm going to request, respectfully request that you allow me to address the Warrant and Finance Committee members and the public. Um, I would have done so that evening, had I been given the chance. Um, I feel like the purpose of this presentation that I've put together is so that the Warrant and Finance can see the entire string of events that actually took place, so that they're not getting just bits and pieces of, pieces of it. And quite honestly, so that if anybody does watch the November seventh or November ninth meeting, they can see what actually took place because I have worked in this town for thirteen years, and it has been only once or twice that I have gotten up before a board and had that deep of concerns about comments that are made and said, and I've got them all for you, that I, I feel like I should be able to address the Warrant and Finance, and I'm just, I'm upset to see that they're not all here, but I would like to address them.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I might have to move over a little. Okay. And it started at a public meeting here, um, just to make sure that everybody here is Warrant and Finance, um, I can try to address you, knows and understands my role. Um, I did start in 2004 for the town of Acton. I was an assistant to the currently elected town clerk, tax collector that held the position. In 2006, the voters changed that position from elected to appointed, and I came from Chaplain and started working here in '06. So in '06, I was appointed the town clerk and tax collector. Somewhere about, uh, four or five years in, it was determined that there was more IT work needed. Um, and the selectmen at the time created a position with, there was a list of, of duties that basically said, okay, Jen, here's a list of things that our current staff isn't able to do, you know, maintain the website, do the backups, do the maps online, we would like to allocate you ten hours a week at this rate, and we'd like to have you do those. So that got added on, okay? Couple of years went by, and that position, the IT position, turned into an office manager. So it really felt like, the board felt like they needed one person to be the contact at the town hall. They come and go as selectmen and to try to keep everything flowing and make sure we have all the information, they, they wanted, you know, one person to oversee all of the ordering, or, you know, if we had calls to the attorney, as selectmen change over the years, we don't want to keep calling them with the same question. So it was just more of a contact. About a year and a half ago, um, under different selectmen, that position was changed to town administrator. Um, after the public has asked, uh, Warrant and Finance, I believe, was the original startup at a few months back, we did email Maine Municipal, who is our attorney, they are attorneys for everybody in the state, for all, all five hundred municipalities, and said, did the Board of Selectmen have the authority to change this job title from office manager to town administrator without a vote? We went through a list, I've got a, a three-page document, I think I just shared it with Dennis last week. Here's the questions. Do you do this? Who does this? Who does this authority? We went back and forth. Dennis will attest, as will the selectmen and the Warrant and Finance that have seen it, there was nothing wrong with the way the town of Acton changed that position. It was completely legal, you shift positions, your code enforcement officer a year ago was changed to the, uh, land, director of land use. Things change, jobs get merged, that's where we are today. So my role as town administrator is to work for the Board of Selectmen. You've seen me sitting up here each week with selectmen's meetings, taking minutes, looking to them for guidance as to what they want to do next. They are your town managers, your town bodies. I'm a glorified secretary with a title that says town administrator. That's what that is, you know, don't, don't put more into it than it's not because that's, I do what they tell me to do, okay? So, personal property, this is what happened with Warrant and Finance, and this is what everybody, I want everybody to see. So the first meeting, that personal property came up for the first time was October 24th, and you're gonna see the volunteers, I do get a little nervous when you're getting people near the water and the dam and-
At the bridge.
And all that, so.
We'll call them tomorrow.
Thank you.
William Williams again with Warrant Finance. We've been besieged by a number of people who have told us about the fact that personal property assessments are not made by, uh, the Board of Selectmen for a number of retail entities. The one specifically, I'm not going to mention the name in public, I will send you an email as far as the name is concerned, because I don't think the taxpayer had anything to do with this. But about three years ago, it was decided by the Board of Selectmen not to assess, uh, that for personal property at that particular site, and it's never been rescinded, we're still not taxing the, um, the entity, uh, in 2017. Now, I don't know whether or not this was just decided amongst the Board of Selectmen, I can't find any evidence that a town meeting occurred and which they gave permission, uh, to quit taxing somebody. But looking at personal property valuation from 2008 forward, our, our valuation for, for personal property tax in this town in 2008 was greater than three million dollars. Uh, it's now less than a hundred thousand. What's happening? Has the auditor caught this? Has the auditor said anything to you all about that? Uh, as far as, uh, the town, I don't, as I said, we can't find any evidence that the town gave permission for you to not tax certain people. Um, and neither the legislative body, the town meeting by state law, or the, uh, Board of Selectmen may opt out of assessing any personal property, otherwise it's taxable under state law. And I would appreciate you all looking into this particular matter, I will email you the retail entity that, that is involved that I know of, and to find out from the auditor, has there truly been that big a drop in our, uh, valuation of property tax? Uh, is it because, and I'm told, and this is just rumor, and I, I'm embarrassed to even say it, but I was told that the Board of Selectmen decided that it was too much trouble to do that type of thing, uh, for the amount of money that they received as far as taxes were concerned. I don't know if that's true. However, it needs to be looked at because in these times in which we're getting our own property taxes increased, uh, because of, of, of need for, for monies, and we have people who have been taken off the rolls as far as personal property tax, that's wrong. And I thank you.
Dr. Williams, oh, go ahead.
So, um, he's referring to Apple Valley Campground. Um, the, and a bit of, bit of clarification, so one of the reasons that they stopped, stopped doing personal property assessments down there is because you weren't doing it townwide. And, because if you're going to assess personal property, that means that, we'll use Dennis as an example, that every excavator, every, you know, piece of equipment that he has and his, on his property that's not registered has to be assessed in personal property. So the way that it, that it was many, many years ago is that the, um, the people that rented down there had some sort of camper down there, they either got their own personal property bill, or they came in and paid excise on what the vehicle was, on what the trailer was worth if it wasn't being registered. It was actually at the recommendation of the auditors, and it's been quite a few years, but I can pull some documents for you for next year, that we stopped doing that because we weren't treating everybody the same. Um, as far as the, the decrease in personal property, that goes from, uh, the biggest thing on that is the CMP went from, their power lines went from being taxed under personal property to real estate, so that shift happened there. Um, we had a, a big hit when, um, the restaurant at, at 559 Route 109, the gas tanks and all that store, all that came out. Uh, small businesses that have, the only personal property that we can tax now legally is personal property that people, um, that they register with us, for example, signs, you know, Pepsi signs that might be at the foot of the lake, or, you know, if the Stanton's had a, um, a copier lease through their business, you know, that they're, they're required to record with us, that's what we, that's what we tax. It was either you have to tax the entire town the same as personal property, and yes, part of what, what Dr. Williams said is true in regards to, towns have the right in Maine to decide if they're gonna tax personal property. If you check with surrounding towns in York County, um, I, I think that you might find one or two that do, and, you know, we certainly could take that survey, but you either have to spend the money on the assessor to treat everybody the same, meaning visit every single property and assess personal property, or not do it at all. And that was the decision made then. Um, we can, you know, I'll look into whether or not it was a legal decision, I mean, it was a recommendation of the auditor at the time.
Please, please, please do because according to what the NEA says, that you, as a Board of Selectmen or as the town meeting, do not have the right to opt out of assessing people for personal property, uh, which is taxable under state law.
Right, I will get you some follow-up from the speaker.
The other, the other item that I had on this whole thing is, you can't pick out people that you're not gonna tax and pick out others that you-
Well, right, and that's why they stopped taxing that particular campground, is because they weren't taxing anybody else in town.
But as far as other retail entities, and the valuation to have gone from three-point-six million dollars in valuation down to under a hundred thousand while we're raising property taxes, doesn't make a lot of sense. And I, over my hundred and eighty seconds, and I apologize.
Okay, so that is, oops, one more, wanna. That's the first time conversation took place at a public meeting. The next, the very next day, we got an email from, um, Dr. Williams that said, last night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I brought out two facts to the board. First, Apple Valley Campground is no longer being billed for personal property taxes, the situation has gone on for a sudden time. Secondly, the valuation has gone from three-point-six million to a hundred thousand. No one has mentioned it, the auditor apparently has said nothing either, although such a drop in valuation should be a concern for the town that had to increase property taxes this year. To me, an option would be, Board of Selectmen place an article on the annual town meeting to totally stop the collection of personal property on retail entities. The state receives none of this money, so it's essentially a loss to the town. Or two, hire a personal property assessing agency similar to the one that makes real estate assessments, uh, this agency would specialize in such, such types of taxes and would not necessarily, uh, be required continuously. We would check the database every three to five years. Um, and actually, if you decide to move forward with personal property with all retail entities, you do have to bill based on April 1st of every year. Um, what is not an option is collecting some but all, but not all personal property taxes. That is wrong and probably illegal to say nothing, uh, to say nothing else. Um, I'd like to have a meeting to discuss the tax collector and the auditor, but first, they need to get their own meeting together. So that took place. My response was, hello all, there is so much more to personal property law and taxation than can be said in one email. Mr. Williams, however, is right that the town stopped billing AV Campgrounds some time ago, and this was done by the selectmen, as there was a concern that there were other unregistered campers that were not being taxed. Another reason for this is that we don't have the manpower or resources to fairly and across the board, as assessors, decide to go out and, and assess them. So we use a method called self-disclosure, uh, due to limited resources. So the Maine Revenue Law does not allow a select body or town vote, the right to vote to stop pursuing personal property. So what Dr. Williams is saying is correct, you have to bill personal property. However, in Acton does bill personal property, but it bills by what they call self-disclosure. So as of now, uh, that has not been challenged by any court of law, this comes from our assessor, and we would encourage anyone interested in opening this up to contact surrounding towns to see what, if any, personal property they collect. We're making an effort unlike other towns. Uh, the town of Chaplain, for example, does not collect any personal property, not even self-disclosure. If the town's selectmen or voters want to be a hundred percent taxed on their personal property, it's important that they understand what that will do. This will range from household items, from TVs to tractors in the yard. Uh, the licensed assessing firm that we use now, O'Donnell's and Associates, is working, uh, to gather information, and it'll be presented soon. Similar to real estate, we will be required to tax it as of April 1st. Abatements and supplements on many home visits will be required again. I assure you, there's a lot to it. If the Warrant and Finance, as a committee, wishes to pursue personal property, uh, the Board of Selectmen respectfully requests that you take, that you meet and take an official vote to forward it to them. And I think I ended by saying, I hope the former selectmen that sit on this committee will have information to add, because remember, on the 24th, when he came forward, he spoke on behalf of the Warrant and Finance. Next email, and I promise you this will wrap up in about five minutes. So this is from another member, former selectman, William Williams. And Jen, just getting back online and catching up with some correspondence planned for the meeting next week, it's my understanding, if the issue is correct, the issue is much more simple than indicated by your exchanges on 10/25 and 10/26. Jen, your description of the complexity of this tax in the fourth paragraph is historically correct and reflects the fact that the timing enactment, which was that the bar or floating of the mooring was far more valuable than the real state, than the real property a tax owner paid. However, infrequently overlooked is the fact that the law was amended in 1973 to exempt household furniture, um, and he said, states the statute, so when I said in the prior week, TVs, it would not be your TV, but it would be your stuff in the barn. Um, he states the statute, sooner have an issue clear, clearly defined as possible before we take up any action as a committee. I think it would be helpful if everybody involved reviewed the attached. Uh, the next one was simply a statement saying that, um, I don't, Jen, I don't disagree with any of what you said. Self-disclosure is the method the town has always used in the past, just trying to keep things simple. Mr. Gore that wrote this email was a selectman before I even started in the town of Acton, okay? And remember, I started in 2004, so they had been using a method, a self-disclosure method. Another email that comes in before our next meeting even- Another email that comes in before our next meeting even comes is, "Dear Committee, the annual reports were inconsistent in that after 2002, they left out assessors' reports. The tax information on the town's website does not include commitment for some of the years listed. See attachment. Really looking forward to an explanation." So here is a link, Warren and Finance, according to Title 30A, Section 208, which shows the requirements of an annual town report. And this, this link was sent to them. All right. So this link here, Title 30A, shows the Warren and Finance Committee annual report. These are main state statutes, what's required to be in there. Okay? So it breaks down, there are four or five documents that are required by law, and there are some towns that print a three or four, very small-town report. So that was that. I went on to say, "If things were different or inconsistent after 2002, I would recommend you reach out to the selectmen from that time period." So I then sent him, or sent the committee, a list that I won't, that's a link to our website. Oops, supposed to be. All right. I can't see. A link to the website showing all of the elected results, if anybody has some. The problem, because we are all human, is that this is a right-handed laptop, and I am left-handed, and I get my left buttons mixed up down there. So this should bring you to the town's website, if the internet is working, which is going to give Warren and Finance all of the selectmen since 2002, so that the inconsistencies that they're looking for answers from really should be directed to them, because this board, nor myself, has the answers to why town reports might have been inconsistent over those particular years. Nope, there it is. So there's, and you can see, if you haven't looked at this before, I have election results. Every vote that you have ever taken is on here from 2007 all the way up. Those are all in PDFs, so they can't be... So I went on to say that the board has flexibility in their town report as long as the minimum requirements are met. As Mr. Williams is looking for an explanation, all I can really offer is the names of prior selectmen to those questions. I was hired in 2006. It wasn't until Lorraine retired in 2014 that I was given the task of putting the town report together. Even at that time, the instruction came from this selectman. It's impossible and irrelevant to question, and I'm putting this together because it's going to be stated again in another meeting about these town reports. So in regards to the website, you are correct, Dr. Williams. The commitment is not on the site from 2014 current, however, it's not required either. Real estate and personal property bills are online for convenience but are not required. Due to the size of the documents, we stopped putting them online. Okay, so we have an October 24th Board of Selectmen meeting where they come, an individual comes and discusses personal property. We tell him that we need a little time to pull the information together. We have some exchanges of emails. So the next meeting that's going to be held is a week after. They meet every Tuesday. And on October 31st...
Personal property tax. William Williams' follow-up.
Yeah, this is similar to Buzzell Road. I had a lot more to it that we wanted to be able to present to him, so I'm going to ask you to table it until after the election so that we can have a slideshow for you, have a breakdown of each year, and show you where the values have shifted so that you can see it and we can make sure they get all the information. So not quite done with that one.
Okay. New business, zoning...
So it's brought up on the 24th, 31st. Remember, we're looking for 10 years' worth of information. I told them on the 31st that it's not done. It's not simple. You know, yes, I run two or three different titles, but the town saves a lot of money on insurance and other reasons by consolidating these positions, but it doesn't mean that I can get everything done in every single week. So it wasn't priority based on the request, so I asked the board to table it. They didn't have a meeting on November 7th, which was Election Day. They generally don't. So then we come to the Warren and Finance meeting. So remember, I have not given Warren and Finance any information on personal property at this point. What you've seen is all that's happened.
Next item is the valuation data. As everyone knows, I brought this up at one of the Board of Selectmen meetings two weeks ago, based on data that I discovered, and asked that the Board of Selectmen look at the data and give us at least a 10-year rundown on valuation. The valuation had fallen from $3.6 million, I think is the high, down to about $67,000. And I tried to keep it...
Valuation.
Valuation.
Yeah.
For personal property tax.
Oh.
This is for retail, retail personal property tax. I'm sorry. And so, based on that, it was certainly open, I thought, to some questioning as to how this had happened. And that having been said, I think we got off to a difficult start because first we received an item that said it was too complex if we had to go from house to house and count television sets. And I quickly wrote back and said, "We're not talking about property, personal property. We're talking about retail entities' personal property taxes." And so that was clarified. Then, this past week, I asked if we could have to see exactly what the tax collector does, and so I came in on Election Day. In fact, dropped by the window and asked if I could possibly have a copy of the job description for the tax collector. And Ms. Ru said, "Yes, I'll send it to you this afternoon." I then went back to the House, wrote the committee, and I said, "We're going to get the copy of how we have a job description for this office." And here is one that is a model that contains all sorts of items. You can use that to compare it with. Well, then somehow or other, somebody got into the idea that we wanted to make a job description. Believe you me, we have enough to do without getting involved in making job descriptions for people in the administration who are under the Board of Select Persons. And how that got started, I do not have any idea. So as it may, we're going to wait what the Board of Selectmen say, which I believe is going to be this coming Tuesday. And I'll be interested in trying to figure out why they've gone for so many years without a job description on the tax collector. I don't understand that, number one. And number two, why don't we have a really good software program so that if somebody from the General Citisnery or someone from this committee or others could come in and say, "I would like to have data for such and such and such and such a date for the last three years," and they can press the button and out it comes? Or at least say, "Hey, the report will be ready for you tomorrow morning," rather than saying, "Well, you can go into the vault and do all sorts of handwork yourself if you really want it." And I think in the 21st century, that's a bit pushy. And so, but we're willing to go into the vaults and look at paperwork. And Mr. Gore and I have both sworn that we're going to do that if, in fact, we can't get any other additional data that we may decide upon that may be necessary, and we'll ask other members of the committee to assist us as well. Yes, would you like to make a comment?
Okay. So this is the Warren and Finance talking about personal property for the first time. He came to the selectmen's meeting on the 24th, asked the questions. On the 31st, we tabled it. And now here we are, being questioned, I'm being questioned as a tax collector, as a town administrator, as to why it's not ready yet and why it's not done. And the comments that you've got to go in the vault and do it yourself, nobody said that, okay? Nobody made any accusation even close to that. Yes, he came into my office on Election Day, on Election Day, and asked me for a job description for the tax collector. Now, first of all, if you're concerned about personal property valuation, the job description you really want to be looking at is the assessor, because the assessor assesses personal property. The tax collector collects what the assessors tell her to collect, okay? I do not have a job description. The treasurer doesn't have a job description. The transfer station guys don't have job descriptions. Ken Paul's got one, because a year and a half ago, when we changed his title, they gave him one. I have been working here from 2006. You can go back and count the selectmen that I have been through, okay? Write the job description. It's okay. I mean, I visualize it, follow all these main state statutes, 21A and 30A, and do everything you can for everybody. I mean, this isn't about a job description, but to try to tie the two together in this next clip. So, but before we go on, let's look at the role of the assessor, because just to be clear that it's not the tax collector. So state law requires that assessors determine as nearly as possible the nature, the amount, and the value of real estate and personal property within the jurisdiction that is subject to property taxation as of April 1st per 36 MRSA. They must also make evaluation, and this is called an actual assessment. Now, this is the next paragraph is very important. "The inventory of taxable property is the most important record prepared by the assessors because it is the basis for making the assessments. We heard the concerns that if you're not assessing properly, you're causing other people's taxes to go up. The assessors must make an inventory each year, but methods they should use in obtaining the information are not addressed in state statute. There are two ways in which this information can be obtained. One is by encouraging taxpayers to file lists of their taxable property, also known as self-disclosure, that we do. The other is a personal visit by the assessors to seek out and appraise taxable property, which is an option if the board decides to move forward with retail personal property, but you've got to do it to all of them the same." So that comes out of the main municipal note. Couple of comments about the vaults, having to go in and dig out the vaults, and why we're not just pushing buttons and documents are appearing. Why are the tax commitments stored in the vault? Well, according to Title V, Section 95B, state law requires that permanently maintained records must be kept in a fireproof safe or vault. So I pulled out the tax commitments, I think, from the last 2006, so they're all in there in the vault and many, many years more. But just to show you in case you're not aware or... So at the beginning of a tax commitment, you have what you call an assessor's certification. And every year, when the assessing is done, your higher company goes out and they determine what everybody's value is as of April 1st. They put all the numbers down from county tax to municipal appropriation. They meet with the treasurer. They meet with the assessor. They factor in homestead. They factor in beta reimbursements. And they come down to a bottom line. And based on that bottom line, they then have to say, "Okay, how much overlay do we need?" That's the extra money for abatements that they might have to pay out. And then they're given a range of what they can set taxes at. Once they decide what they set taxes at, they sign this certificate of commitment. This one says, "To Jennifer Ru, the collector of municipal taxes in Acton. Herein and committed to you, a true list of assessors of the estates of the persons listed within and their assessments. You are levied to collect the same and the respective amount." This one was $5.7 million. It was signed by Anthony Caballero and Dennis Long. So there's a grand total in here telling you how much I had to collect. This is a listing of the actual, every single property. There's real estate in here and personal property in the back. There are totals at the bottom of each number, which will correspond with the originals that the selectmen signed. So that's how the tax rate is set. Now, we have tax committee book out here in the hallway for the current year that you can look at, but these are not documents that you want to leave on the table. These are the original town documents. Nobody said that documents wouldn't be pulled. Nobody has not been willing to give this information. A week has only passed at this point. Okay, so what I have here, because of a couple of comments, so there are 29 cities and towns in York County, okay? And it is a little hard to see. I apologize, but I'll give you a paper copy if you want. But essentially, what it says is every town alphabetical. It says, "Are your tax bills online?" Question number one. How many years' worth are your tax commitments online? Those big documents. Because remember, we saw the concern that there were inconsistencies with the website. So we went through, and I called and contacted every single city and town in York County. And what we came up with, so county Y, 19 out of 29 towns in York County have their tax bills online. 19 out of 29. More than half, that's not bad. If I took all of those columns and I averaged them, how many years' worth they keep on their website? Two. The next question was, "Are your tax commitments online?" Those big, large documents, because there's no difference other than the grand totals at the end of those pages than your tax bill. You can take the PDF of all of the tax bills, add up all the assessments, and you're going to come up with that same number. So 13 out of 29, a little lower for the actual tax commitments. Out of those 13, how long do they keep them? Two. Right above there, you see Acton, little old Acton. Does Acton put their taxes online? Yes. How many years' worth of taxes are on the website right now? Nine. Are our tax commitments online? Yes. How many years? The big question. Been so much controversy around it, couldn't wait just for an answer. Personal property tax, why did it drop? What happened? In 2008, and just before I get too far, this is a signed, detested document from Dennis Verubie, who is your licensed assessor. Your selectmen serve as the selectmen, assessors, and overseers of the court, but they have the right to contract out assessing services, which is actually a really good idea in small towns, because A, they're not state-certified, and B, there's no chance of politics involved. We've got somebody from a different company that's coming in. He doesn't know where he's going. He doesn't know whose brothers, sisters, what. So this comes from O'Donnell's and Associates, and he's signed and sealed it. And he actually pulled this information on Wednesday when he was in the office. So here we go. 2008, the total taxable value of personal property was $3.6 million, just like Mr. Williams said. Of that, CMP had a value of $2.2 million. Now, if we remember back to the October 24th meeting, I think I said that. I don't recall hearing it in any other meeting since then, but I thought I said that. There was another entity known as Herd Lumber that had a value of $163,000. No other counts with a value of more than $30,000. So that's a synopsis of that year. So in 2009, personal property dropped. It dropped from $3.6 to $1.2. Why did it drop? Because David Boufar, who is the assessor for the state of Maine, who audits our assessing records every year, came in and said, "These CMP lines are supposed to be under real estate." We shifted $2.2 million from personal property to real estate, okay? So in 2010, personal property was $1.1 million. The biggest change was the drop of Herd Lumber. The business closed. They went off the rolls. 2011, personal property went down to $54,000 in 2011. This was because the campers were dropped off personal property. So that's the drop. If you look at from 10 to 11, that's your drop for campers. But the Board of Selectmen at the time, and when we haven't discussed this as a whole, stand by what they did. And what they did was fair to that business unless they considered taxing them all. So that was the change in 2011. 2012, personal property went back up to $75,000. $24,000 increase suggested that the town discovered some new property, new personal property. The self-disc...
Disclosure.
Disclosure, thank you, is starting to pick up. In 2013, personal property went back down to 62%. He dropped a 10%, which he said was based on depreciation, okay? And remember, this is the assessor creating this document. 2014, personal property increased to $66,000 based on new disclosures. 2015, beta happened. Okay, we're going to go into a slide on exactly what that is. But personal property increased to $90,000 with $69,000 in beta. Beta is a Business Equipment Tax Exemption Program. The owner files for an exemption application, where the town and the state reimburses the town at 50% of what the tax would have been, okay? So not only is our personal property being fair townwide, we're back up to $90,000 and $7,000 in beta. 2016, personal property increases to $432,000. $432,000 with $120 in beta. The biggest change was Time Warner. Our assessors are doing their job. They're sending, you know, if you, if a company like Time Warner comes in and we don't see a self-disclosure come in from them, we're going to send them one, okay? Personal property... Personal property increases to 432 because Time Warner was added, and then we had an additional 110 beta from Wells Fargo. And then 2017, where we heard many times that personal property was now less than 100,000. In 2017, this commitment that we have over here, personal property was 532,000 with 110% being reimbursed at 50%. So there've been some drops, but it's working its way back up. But the biggest piece was from CMP. So if that could have just kindly been said at the Warren and Finance meeting, or the Warren and Finance Committee could have waited for the information, this all could have been prevented. But instead, we continue our Warren and Finance meeting, where it gets to the best part. Quickly, beta, we just talked about business equipment tax exemption. Any business that is non-retail can apply, must self-disclose by April 1st. We get 50% of that back. The hired assessing company I mentioned, but I wanted to make sure if anybody needed a pen, we can leave this slide up for a minute. O'Donnell's and Associates are located in New Gloucester, Maine. They are certified Maine assessors, which I appreciate my selectmen, but they are not, so they should not be doing it. Owner, John O'Donnell. Company actually started in 1961 with his father, John E. O'Donnell. Our local contact is Dennis Barubi. That's his telephone number.
I do believe that part of the problem that has arisen is because this committee has unduly relied upon our overworked town administrator. And I also believe very firmly that we should not be working from or gathering A data from other than original documents, because we want to be sure it's correct.
Okay, let's stop there.
When we rely upon...
The overworked town clerk, how many of you are overworked in the job you do? First of all, I don't say that out loud. I've never said that. I love my job. I love the town of Acton, and I work extremely hard here, okay? So I don't want it insinuated that I'm overworked and buried and can't maintain my job. The second statement about you want to make sure there are accurate records? What are you trying to say? Let's find out.
Has been done here, town reports. Well, how many opportunities are there for errors to be made translating the initial commitment into the town report and then repeating that information and basing some action on it here? I think it is a burden of this committee if we're going to investigate and look into, for instance, issues related to personal property. That is, this committee's responsibility and the members of this committee to generate that material. It's not proper, or I don't believe it's proper, except in circumstances where there are only available access to that data may be through a town administrator. It's not proper to rely upon that town administrator to deliver to us that data. We're responsible for our own data.
Before you say anything else, I just wanted to, if I may, interject something, and that is, everyone, both the Board of Selectmen as well as this committee, took an oath of office to uphold the constitution of the state of Maine. And it seems to me that if anyone had seen these data that I saw with a huge 90% drop in valuation with all sorts of blank spots in between, that it was worthy of finding out what happened. Now, the selectmen seem to have taken the idea that we should not have said anything or that shame on us, we shouldn't be discussing it. And the fact is that just my having brought it before the Board of Selectmen should have been, hey, that's a good point, we'll look into it and work with you on it, rather than saying, you know, we're angry, you shouldn't have your meeting tonight, it's costing the taxpayer money to have a meeting tonight, and you have nothing to talk about because you don't have a warrant and all this kind of stuff. This is something which looks awful on paper. Now, there may be explanations for it, and I truly hope and pray that there are explanations for it, but when you go from 3.6 mil...
You truly hope and pray that there are explanations for it. You come to the Board of Selectmen on October 24th. I tell you right off the bat from recollection that it had a big part to do with CMP. I then tell you a week later, because of a major November election and a personal reason with my employee, which I know you're aware of, it wasn't top priority for me. 10 years' worth. You have the meeting with Warren and Finance, who hasn't seen all the back data, and you're going to insinuate that you hope and pray there's a reason for all the blanks?
Million dollars in valuation, down to $67,000 in valuation for retail, personal property. Then somebody ought to ask a question, and I didn't see any questions coming from the Board of Selectmen. I don't think it should...
Or somebody should give the Board of Selectmen and the staff a chance to answer. The Warren and Finance was told over and over that the answers would be there on November 14th. There was no reason for this meeting to be held on November 9th, and to insinuate that you're not 100% sure that the documents in the vault are accurate and that you need to come and search for them yourselves, and that you're hoping and praying that there's not more to it.
Okay, I'll just...
Now, you may continue if you want to, Mr. Gore.
No, I think we...
Okay, last slide. So, per the request of the least, because it was mentioned over and over that the selectmen were angry, and the selectmen asked them not to have the meeting, this is the email that the Chair of the Board of Selectmen sent to Dr. Williams on November 8th, the day before the meeting. "If you have previously enacted, if you have a previously enacted warrant article, which is written to require the recommendations of the Warren and Finance Committee, you are meeting prematurely at the expense of the town taxpayers and volunteer time of the committee. At the October 24th and October 31st Board of Selectmen's meeting, Jennifer said she will provide you with the answers and the information regarding the fluctuation in valuation of personal property and billable personal property. The information Jennifer is providing comes from Dennis at O'Donnell's and Associates, the company that Acton uses for property tax assessment. Dennis's answers, you'll find, explains very well the decline in valuation you were questioning, as well as the reason for not billing personal property taxes at Apple Valley. I am sure both reasons were in no way..." Precious, yes, or due, I'm sorry. Remembering the phrase, "due to the lack of a job description." So remember, in the beginning, we tried tying the fact that I didn't have a job description to the loss of personal property tax, and that's why I'm standing up here tonight. Jennifer will have the answers for you on November 14th. Today's November 14th. I have asked Jennifer and Dennis to not attend the Thursday night meeting. If you respectfully wait for the information you requested of Jennifer and O'Donnell and Associates, which took time and taxpayer money to research, you will see where the admissions were and where the additions. I respect your rightful search for answers to these questions on behalf of the taxpayers. However, I request you postpone your meeting until you have the answers provided by Jennifer. The answers will allow for informal discussion."
Informative.
Informative. That is a timeline, and that's what happens.
It's a nice presentation and provided all the answers.
This could have been shortened by a quarter had the Warren and Finance not had the conversations they had on November 9th and insinuated the comments that were made. That could have been cut in half. So thank you for that.
Say that again. Okay.
I'm going to move on to Jim Driscoll.
I think we're all set.
You're all set. I will welcome public comments, and we will remind you that there are three minutes.
That's right, but you're the one that caused all this. Ted Kryzak, all this talk about personal property tax, my first experience with it in Acton was when I first moved in, 1979.
Thank you.
And I was building my house, and I bought a tractor and a bulldozer, small bulldozer. And this car comes driving up my driveway, didn't know who it was, and this gentleman gets out and biv overalls, one side unbuttoned, hand tucked into his belly, and he says, "I'm John Hobbs, I'm a selectman in Acton. You've got these tractors here, and it's my job to make sure that you pay taxes on them." Well, I went over to Rena Andrews' house, because she was the town clerk, and she comes out of the kitchen, dries her hands on her towel, and goes into the office, and I tell her what John Hobbs said, and she says, "No, John just wanted to use your bulldozer." So we didn't do any taxes. Now, I did vote to stop the personal property tax. And what happened was Dennis and Tony and Larissa asked the town in 2010, the year that I was elected, if they wanted to do a reevaluation of the town. So then, we went into bidding when we took over. I came in in July, and then Bill came in in, what, October, I think? And we went out to bid, and O'Donnell's won the bid. So we're going through the process, and Dennis and his board had had the campground evaluated in April that year of 2010. So they were charged taxes for that year. But then, as the assessing went on, and it came time to do it again, O'Donnell's told us that they do not do personal property. They only do real estate. So they would not go and do the campground. They also told us that it is against the law for us to only tax certain people and not spread the tax to everybody in town. So they told us we would have to hire this other firm, like O'Donnell's, but does just personal property tax. Then what they would do is they would go, if we just charged to businesses, they would go to every business in town. So if you sell anything out of your house, you sell eggs, you make any kind of money in your home as a home business, we were going to have to send an assessor into your home and have them go around and assess what equipment could be taxed and what equipment couldn't be. So we didn't want to do that. The other thing was, was the money we were taxing on the campers was not being paid. And the bills were, I'm trying to remember, 50 to 250 bucks maybe?
Yeah, around there.
The nice of the trailer? A year in personal tax assessment. Now, nobody was paying it, and the trailers are constantly being sold, so we didn't know who the owners were half the time. So we're sending out tax bills, nobody's getting them, and they're not coming in to pay it. So then they suggested we send out, tell everybody to come and pay excise tax. You have an unregistered vehicle, you need to register it, then the town would get the excise tax. So we met with the Smiths, and the Smiths helped us out by sending a notice to all of the campers that they needed to pay excise tax. And I think we got, very few came in and paid it, right? People that would always pay their bills came in, they got the notice, they came in, and they paid it. And I don't know if they paid it since then, but probably not, right? Since we sent the letter?
That's when you guys instructed me to start looking into small claims court. And it costs more to have it served and have it filed in the court than some of the values were.
Right. Yeah, it was going to cost $1,500 per case for 50 bucks to 250 bucks. So it just didn't make any sense. And by the time we got to court, the way those properties were being transferred, we wouldn't even have the same owner anymore. So that's why we decided to stop it all across the board. The other thing is, is we were only taxing certain businesses in town.
Time.
But it was a really, really good explanation.
So that's why we did it, was because of, it was against the law for one thing, we weren't doing it fairly across the board, and I didn't think that anybody in town would want an assessor to come to their house for personal property tax, because a lot of people didn't let the assessors in for their properties, because they didn't want them in their homes.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Ted's right, I probably did cause most of the problems, I don't know. To get off this subject, when I, first off, the question was asked tonight, if anybody on the road committee has any experience with sanding. And I have many years' experience. I worked 13 years with the town and probably another 12 to 15 years privately. So me questioning, which I haven't done, the quality of sand that they use is wrong. I haven't asked that question. And I have been, I have not, and I don't think anybody in this room, at least since I've been back on the road committee, heard me say anything negative about any road commissioner. I don't believe I have, and it was implied tonight that I have, and I take exception to that. And the other thing is, when we was talking, when I'd mentioned before, I was brought up again about my comment about when people receive a bid awarded from the town, when I said that, you know, these people who have spent money processing the stuff, and I felt personally that you had an obligation to buy that material. And I said nothing negative about the road commissioners at that point either. And the other thing, and I'm going to use this word, because it was said that I did, but I do not use this word in public. I have never said that any road commissioner or the selectmen screwed anybody. And I take offense to the fact that it's put out there on television that I use that terminology. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is again. I thank you. That was the answers we were looking for. There was certainly no impoliteness that I know of that we tried to display to either the Board of Selectmen or to Ms. Ru, and I repeat again, you do a good job. Most of the answers and the explanation is now given. We don't need another meeting of Warren and Finance with regards to this. All we need is an official statement from the Board of Selectmen with the points that you brought out, and I thank you.
I'm back about the turnarounds. Are we just going to leave it this way? Or are we going to take care of the liability issues and get the proper documents? I want an answer.
We made a decision, and we're waiting until spring. I mean, that's what we decided, and that's what we're doing.
I understand you're doing it, and you do realize that you put all of us at risk when you do this?
Yes.
Okay. And the bridges? We're still comfortable with leaving this in the hands of one individual who is unable to even read a bridge report?
Okay, be careful what you say.
Well, I am polite. I feel this should be turned over to three committees. It's a six-figure project. It has two towns and two states, and this is not a one-man band operation.
I did call Wakefield yesterday and left a message to talk about Canal, because that's what I have documentation on from 10 years ago. Somebody dropped the ball back then, and I'm going to work on that.
Okay, good. Who else is involved with this?
Just me.
Okay. And we do need to have another road committee meeting. When are you available?
Me, Tuesdays.
All right, after next week's meeting?
I'll check the schedule. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, perfect.
Dave? I am literate. I know how to read, okay? I've taken the bridge classes. I took them before. Mrs. Hart, I met with the bridge engineers, engineers, plural, okay? But the problem is here, I'm going to beat this dead horse again, but this is on you We've got a road committee, the Rogue Road Committee. You've let them go wild. Now they seem to think they want to do my job, Ann Scoss' job, but they seem to be picking on me just as much, but I'm not going to take it to heart, because I'm a big boy and I'm used to it. But I've been stabbed in the back enough, and, you know, Mrs. Hart has enough time to inspect all my jobs and make sure I'm doing my job while it's supposed to snow on Thursday night. I like to have her ride around at 1:00 in the morning, like I did the other night, and inspect that, not at her leisure, okay? I'm tired of this every week. Your road committee keeps coming up here and giving me a list of things to do. I'm doing what I can. I've, many times, I've had the same individual on camera say that I had, me and the other road commissioner have said that we do not have time to do this, okay? We have not said that. I am not doing it because I do not work for Cindy Hart. I work for the town of Acton. I'm doing what I believe is important right now and what we can afford, okay? Now, I have given you... I am not doing it, because I do not work for Cindy Hart, I work for the town of Acton. I'm doing what I believe is important right now and what we can afford, okay? Now, I have given you guys some information for what we have to do on this bridge, but you keep listening to somebody who's gone to two classes, who has no experience in any excavation, any bridge work, which I have worked on bridges, big bridges, Tannick Road, Burt Mill Bridge, I worked on those sites, okay? And I work on roads every day. But every time I come up to this meeting, I have to get lectured from somebody who read a book, and I haven't got, this first time, Ed, that you've backed me in about a month, okay? I have talked about resigning several times, okay? Now, I feel what Jen just went through, because I've been going through this for a year, okay? The only reason you're getting your roads plowed by me this year is because she convinced me that I had an obligation to the people who voted me in, okay? Because I don't need this damn job, okay? But every week, I got to go through this, okay? We've had the cops here, this is all getting out of hand, guys. Now, you guys are getting accused of assault. I had a guy come up on TV and threaten to pull me off this thing by my collar, okay? I come out looking like the bad guy, okay? Because me and Elise had a disagreement, maybe, maybe the way I came off was a little-
I'm keeping track, Mr. Man.
Okay, this, and this is the other problem here.
Time.
The time.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, we keep going through this whole thing.
Right.
At some point, this is why this is getting out of hand.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Elise, can you please remind the audience that I have a timer and I am timing them?
Jennifer has the timer, and she's timing people.
I don't need to be reminded.
And if we're keeping anybody up, you can go home and go to bed.
Jim Driscoll, I'd just like to address the, they're saying there should have been a job description when the treasurer and the clerk went from elected to appointed. The, both those positions are under state guidelines and federal guidelines. Talked to the attorney when we went over to appointed, and he said both of those were fine, they're covered underneath that. Also, I think the problem with the personal property, this whole thing, Dennis explained it beautiful the other night, and I think it was the way it was done, where, you know, you have all these meetings, all the, years ago, I mean, Tom Chase would have come back and got all the information, and he would have brought it to the Warren and Finance, Doug threw it before you come out and you use the words investigation, oh, the clerk has a thumb on the commitment book, I mean, just absolutely ridiculous, all of it. Mean-spirited is what it is, and uncalled for. And to see how people are, it's like there's no boundaries, like what David's talking about, the road commissioners. These guys, they know what sand they want to use, you know? They know what they're doing, both been doing this since they were kids, they don't want to screw the town, you know? And the way Jennifer's been treated, the way they, you know, Will Williams says, "Nobody's going to bully our board." Bully your board? It's a disgrace how you handle this whole thing. Did you, did you take a look at these videos?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely incredible. As though there's some, some big scandal. We'll see if the investigation moves forward. You know, it was a simple decision by one Board of Selectmen, and they made the right, right decision. Only one business in town was being taxed, you know? It was their decision, it was perfectly legal. Before you have all these accusations in a public meeting, I mean, get your, get your act together, you know? It's dirty. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that my wife and I worked second shift, we wouldn't get home till 1:00, 1:30, 2:00 in the morning, sometimes later. And the roads that Mr. Winchell takes care of were always excellent. Every single night, we'd have problems on the Turnpike, we'd have problems in Milton, Milton Mills. We'd come up over the bridge, things were great. Our road drifts up constantly at the beginning of it, because of the fields. The road has always been clear. So, I mean, I feel Dave is doing a good job out there, and people are just, leave him alone and let him do his job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of you might know me as working with Jen a while ago. Since I left the town of Acton as an employee, I've worked at two other municipalities. I did watch the clips that she showed tonight, and I did watch them last night. I have seven pages of notes attesting to Jen's honesty and her dedication to the town of Acton. I know I have three minutes, and I know we all want to go home, so I'm not going to go through all of them. I do want to say, as Jen neglected to say, because she's too humble, pick out a town clerk anywhere in the state of Maine or anywhere in this country who is not overworked in the first week of November. An election is ridiculous. She has absentee ballots, she has, you name it, the responsibilities that fall under a clerk in election week, countless, pretty much per state order, nothing else is more important than that. I know that from working with Jen. I know that we had to split responsibilities when it was just the two of us. She had to be in here, and I had to be in there. The election's the most important thing, plain and simple, per state, per government, per wherever you want to look. So, Jen's humbleness, she didn't mention how overworked somebody is that first week in November, and it starts before that. Absentee ballots are about, absentee ballots are available three weeks before that, if not more, depending on when the state gets them out. She has to process all of those, she has to train every single person that works her election, so, and she did it by herself this year due to an unseen issue. So, I'm, in seeing everything that I saw, if they had waited, if anybody had waited to ask her the information till even November 8th, it would have made all the difference. As a town clerk, I know that Jen, I've worked for, I currently work for the city of Biddeford. The city of Biddeford has, off the top of my head, I'm going to go with 15 people that do the job of Jen, if not more. She is the liaison to the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, the registrar of voters, the agent of motor vehicles, the agent of inland fisheries, town administrator, and that's only the ones I know of, and I haven't been here for a while. So, to say that she's overworked, no. Maybe during the week of election? She is by far, in all the municipalities that I have been in, she is by far the most honest and dedicated town employee I have met, and I have worked for some pretty corrupt towns that can't seem to keep their names out of the papers. So, saying that, if given the chance, you can see tonight what she's capable of doing, but she has to be given the chance.
Time, and thank you.
I didn't use up my three minutes before, but I don't really like coming up here, but Jen has always been helpful, she is one busy lady, I can't believe the things she's handling, and it would be a shame to lose her, and I appreciate that lady very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's one of the most efficient people that I've ever known in my life, so I don't know how she does it, but.
Gail Bovier, and I hate coming up here to talk too, so, my voice shakes, I'm sorry about it. This is just a character reference, I've been, I've lived in this town for over 32 years, live on a private road. Every year, I have to ask Jennifer to help me out to find information about our private road and the residents that live on it for road association purposes. She has always been thoughtful and expedient in retrieving the necessary information. When some of us worked to reopen the town gym, she was very supportive and helpful. Later, when a certain group of officials tried to close the gym, she was instrumental and helped both sides be heard and come to some common ground to keep the gym open. Over the years, I have also observed her working with very challenging appointed and elected officials as well, as property owners among others. She has awesome people skills and can turn a potential disastrous interaction and outcome into a positive one. Her work ethic is superb, she respects boundaries and a person's privacy too. Each and every time I've asked questions, seeked information, or had a problem, Jennifer was there with a smile, usually when I lose my registration or something like that. She, it didn't matter how busy she was, she would help anyway. Yes, she's super busy, but always willing to listen and help. Once I picked up a stray, which just happened a little while ago.
Oh, goodness.
Me and my, my animals, and gave her a call because I couldn't reach the dog officer. She came to collect the dog and deliver it home to its rightful owner, even when it was her birthday. She had personal plans, but pushed them aside to help out. Especially recently, she has inspired many in this town to do more and help more. She is the catalyst for many outreach projects. She is unbiased and truly cares for the people in this town. She raises money for people, gathers food, and does just about anything that she can do to lend a hand. I find this extraordinary. Jennifer, do you live in this town?
No, I do not.
And that's what I wrote. I find this extraordinary because she doesn't even live in this town. Finally, she has inspired me, and I have bet many others, to be better people. I truly hope Jennifer understands how much she is respected and admired for all she does for our little town and the people in it. Sincerely, Gail Bovier.
That was great, it's perfect. I'm Pat Main, lived in the town of Acton for 15 years, a lot of you know me, and I just want to thank the Board and Jen for doing such a great job for this town, and we have a gem, let's not lose it. Thank you.
All right, what do we do next?
Any more comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the announcements. What does that say, Board of Selectmen office hours, or this Thursday?
November 6th, 8th.
7 to 8, Kim will be here. There will be no Board of Selectmen meeting on November 28th due to the moratorium on marijuana. The polls will be open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Town Hall is closed on November 23rd, Thanksgiving, and the day after, the 24th. November 25th is the tree lighting here at 5:00 PM, I believe, Santa will be here, crafts and food as well. The town marijuana moratorium is on the 28th. Upcoming meetings, we have November 16th Planning Board at 7:00 PM, November 16th Recreational Meeting at 7:00 PM, November 17th Marijuana Committee meets at 6:00, November 21st, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5:00, November 21st, the Conservation is at 7:00, and November 30th, the Cemetery Committee is meeting at 5:00. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I'd just like to remind everyone to clear the room-